Great, the time is now seven thirty and I would like to call our regular monthly meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trusty Doherty, yes. Trusty Goodenby, yes. Trusty Humphries?
Here.
Trusty Puntia?
Yes.
Trusty Stapleton is absent tonight and President Greer.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three. Welcome to the visitors. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Should we set our motion or should we approve?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Let's just proceed with the roll call.
Sure. Trusty Doherty?
Yes.
Trusty Goodenby?
Yes.
Trusty Puntia?
Yes.
Trusty Humphries?
All right.
Trusty Humphries? Trusty Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to let us know what we're doing?
We are doing very well. We've, um, this month's financials are through the end of June, so that is halfway through our fiscal year. You will see we have posted forty-nine percent of our revenue to date. We do anticipate a couple more payments of property tax in July and then a little bit of a lull before the rest of those start rolling in in the fall. And then we are at forty-one point nine percent expended for the budget. Most of the budget lines are now coming back into, uh, the ones that tend to get spent in advance are coming back into their norm with the exception, of course, of the insurance other policies, which is always expended very, very early in the year.
It's all okay.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters? Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trusty Doherty?
Yes.
Trusty Goodenby?
Yes.
Trusty Humphries?
Here.
Trusty Puntia?
Yes.
President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on agenda items?
No public comment.
We have a public comment on other library business.
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item eight A, the twenty-twenty-one update capital needs assessment report, twenty-septeen through twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's quite the capital needs assessment report. As you know, you guys see this every year. This acts as our spending plan for our capital replacement fund. We do periodically make some little updates to it. As you can see, um, we have added a placeholder of two hundred thousand dollars to next year's capital replacement budget. That will be for the renovation of the access services, um, IT and children's services workrooms. Those workrooms have not been updated since nineteen ninety-nine. The cabinetry in access services is currently de-laminating itself. And no, we really need to reallocate some space in these workrooms. The staffing patterns and the desk configurations just no longer line up. So it's, it's time. We had originally thought about just, contemplated doing just furniture and the more we started touching on priorities, the more that it sounds like we may move a wall or a door, um, not load bearing, but just a couple of things that that may happen. So we did increase the projected amount for that. This project would not start until well into twenty-twenty-two. One of the reasons for that is that our access services manager is currently working with twins and due in September. So we will not begin this project until Amy returns from maternity leave and has a few months to get settled back in. So we, we do have kind of a longer time horizon looking at this project and it could well spill into FY twenty-twenty-three. Other than that, we are well on track to hit our target ending balance for the library capital replacement fund. Our current estimates show it exceeding the million-dollar target balance for twenty-twenty-seven by about three hundred thousand dollars, as we stated.
How did the two hundred thousand dollar number get sort of, was it the end or?
It's a, it's a, it's just a ballpark guess at this point. So anything may happen and, um, as we get into the planning portion with product architecture, that number could fluctuate in next year's, uh, budget planning process. So we'll keep you updated as we, we go through and we are going to try to do this project. And if right about that amount, we're, we're not looking to do, this isn't going to be the biggest renovation project. It's mostly about furniture.
And this is basically just what we're, what we're being asked to approve essentially is just the updated capital needs assessment?
Yes, and, and that is the number that then gets plugged into the budget.
Do we have any questions or comments regarding the twenty-twenty-one update capital needs assessment report as described by Julie? Someone I would approve, I would move that we approve it.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight A, the twenty-twenty-one update capital needs assessment report as presented. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trusty Doherty?
Yes.
Trusty Goodenby?
Yes.
Trusty Humphries?
Yes.
Trusty Puntia?
Yes.
President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item eight A. We're now on to agenda item eight B. I think this is, so this is the lighting relay panel replacement project.
Yes.
And you're recommending that we decline to award it. Would you like to, is this Ian?
This is what?
Ian, the star of the show here?
Building comparisons around your needs is what's been asked tonight to address this.
Ian, just as, as you build into your presentation, can you just explain to someone like me like what exactly this is?
Yeah, um, so we had, you know, we, we, we had good, uh, participation. We, we had seven bidders that showed up and we were optimistic. And then it came to bid opening and it kind of just, the numbers we were given by alarm when we met in March and we, we got the, you know, the engineering estimate and everything else and where the bidding, uh, going through public bid, uh, what we received were not in line with, uh, what we originally had scoped out and what we thought the original cost was going to come out being. Part of that is due to manufacturing and we're, you know, copper is in short right now. Same thing with zinc and aluminum. But a good portion of it was underestimating on the electrical engineers part. The amount of downtime that we were going to have because we were replacing the lighting relay panels and we opened it up to having to meet the new energy efficiency code requirements. So that labor cost was not projected into it. He originally thought we were going to be able to use more field devices like wall switches and daylight harvesting equipment that was older, that is not compatible with the new equipment. So, yeah, everything kind of fell off the rails. We were not expecting it. You know, I went to Julie right away and kind of came up with my, my backup plan, which was, um, not doing a complete replacement. I, I did find some retrofit panels that have new microprocessors in them. Gee, General Electric actually got out of the lighting business about seven years ago. So I did not have a rep that I could contact about a replacement for their relays, but I did work with Fitzgerald's Electric to allocate some and they're readily available. They can ship within one to two weeks. So I'm working on some value engineering options with doing retrofit on the panels, getting the replacement relays. We won't have as much functionality as we would have liked with the other one. We can incorporate it into our automation system. It'll still be on an old-fashioned digital timer that'll, that'll turn on and off the relays as needed, but will be functional and it'll, it's not abandoned. It's technically a new system, it's just not as advanced. But by doing that, I can get us more in line with what we were expecting.
How, how frequently is this type of project, is it like a ten-year lifespan?
It's about fifteen to twenty.
Okay.
About fifteen to twenty. There's a little bit of modification that we're going to have to do, um, but nothing that's like crazy that should really crank up the labor charge on it. So, um, yeah, I'm working on options. I'm just kind of waiting on miles from Fitzgerald's Electric, um, to get some more pricing and availability on those relay panels. But as far as the actual relay sensors go, um, I've already contacted the supplier and they, they have plenty in stock and I can just order them direct, so.
Is this something Julie that we would have to go through and sort of bid process? There's more like buying the electrical panels, getting the electrician, the engineers, and then sort of you work together to get it done?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll be able to.
Sounds like maintenance.
Yes.
I can source everything, um, materialized myself. I don't have to go through, uh, an electrical company for it. So I can just readily, you know, buy it off the internet. And then we bring in Fitzgerald's for the labor portion.
Okay.
Because nobody knows the building as well as they do.
And with some of the occupancy sensors and daylight harvesting controls, one of the things that, um, in my librarian's report back at the end, if you've read through that, uh, it talks about this next lighting project that we're going to be able to do. We just signed the contract with Green V Electrical and that, and using the ComEd Energy Efficiency Program yet again. And this will do the remainder of the building. So generally staff areas and study rooms, even the can lights, everything will be LED and there will be, um, daylight harvesting and occupancy sensors coming with that changeover. So we, we do wind up with the functionality, we're just doing it in a different way. So, and that project is coming in way under budget and will also should get us there before the end of twenty-twenty-one. So it will come in under budget again next year because there is a little bit of lighting in the twenty-twenty-two capital replacement fund budget, so.
Well, thank you for that report, Ian, and thank you for your resourcefulness in helping us stay within our budget. So does anyone have any questions or comments?
This one's a shocker.
Do we need a motion to not do it?
Um, you, you need to decline to award the project. That way we can show, that way any of the bidders can see that we publicly declined to award the bid.
That requires a vote?
Yes.
I move it.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion to decline to award the lighting relay panel project described in agenda item eight B that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trusty Doherty?
Yes.
Trusty Goodenby?
Yes.
Trusty Humphries?
Yes.
Trusty Puntia?
Yes.
President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have declined to award the lighting relay panel replacement project described in agenda item eight B. We're now on to agenda item eight C, the library director evaluation timeline. Julie?
All right. Well, since we've actually started doing this, uh, I, I wanted to just bring this back to your attention. I did send you my check-in on July twenty-first by email. So that's just how we're doing on goals halfway through this year. And to look at our, um, at this timeline and make sure it's the way we want to do it this year. Generally, what would happen is I will, um, do my self-evaluation and then, um, just, and then right after the September board meeting is what I anticipate, sending that self-evaluation and the forms to you all. And then at the October board meeting, the group will go into closed session and create, um, the evaluation together as you did last year. And then at the, before the November board meeting, whoever you designate will, um, give me that evaluation. And then, uh, we can discuss goals for next year or another closed session if necessary at the November board meeting and we still have time to spill that over into December if needed. As I recall, last year, you guys did it all in one, one fell swoop. Did the, the evaluation and the, the salary discussion and goals and everything just kind of happened at once and then it was done.
Can you remind me, is this the same timeline that staff are on as well, pretty much? Are they getting used to it?
No, staff are actually evaluated at mid-year. Because we have to do our budget and we're looking to, um, to actually put a merit component into our, our budget timeline. Staff are actually being evaluated right now and we will complete that process generally by the end of July. So that, um, the staff merit increases, we have a better idea of where those will be going into the budget process.
The thing I ask is because I think this is something that came up as we were discussing this process we put into place the first time this year was like how to distinguish between your goals as a library director and the library's goals. And then how, you know, of course the library's goals and probably partially yours as well, then connect to Gens and then you have other folks at the library. And so the timing of that, especially, you know, thinking that I could teach a class and we can't, right? In terms of like, okay, we have this goal that's shifting at some point and it's like, whoa, you know, it's a shift in the library, it's a shift in for you, it's a shift in for staffers. So that's the only hard to ask is kind of in yourself, but I'm sure you're thinking about like how, or start checking, how that plays out across the whole libraries. Because certainly all those things are so refined and have to be.
Does the, does the timeline, timeline as proposed allow us to finish in November?
Yes, I think so.
As I recall, we did not meet in December last year. And what, are you okay, you're okay to defend?
Yes, oh, absolutely. I'm just happy we're doing the process.
You're happy, you're happy. Well, and, and as I was reviewing your check-in and just thinking about this in general, I think sometimes it's hard, at least for me, because your role is one where like, if things are going well, we're not necessarily hearing it. It's, you know, it's the opposite. And so when things are just kind of going along well, it's, it's sometimes, you know, it's, it's easy to kind of get knocked stop and think about going through this process. So it's good to get back on track. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding, any additional questions or comments regarding the library director evaluation timeline? Okay, we're now on to agenda item nine A, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two draft budget. Well, help us, help walk us through this.
All right. So, um, after our discussion in June, we are targeting a flat tax rate for our taxpayers. As you know, the downtown Tiff district is expiring and so that will come back, the equalized assessed valuation of those properties will come back onto the tax rolls for the library. And that gives us a higher than normal percentage, um, in that new, new property, um, coming onto the tax rolls. So for every one percent, so the EAV, as the EAV goes up, so the tax rate goes down. So they're, they're inversely proportionate. So what we have done here is I've given you three different EAV estimates. The Village is, um, talked about the equalized assessed valuation for the next budget year at their last meeting, at one of their last meetings. And discussed and talked about how the average EAV increase over the last five years has been four point six percent. So we do believe that we are like right in this ballpark that you're looking at. The three percent, the three rates presented are three point five percent, four point five percent and five point five percent. For every one percent that we over or underestimate the EAV change, the tax rate will go up or down approximately point zero zero one nine. So remember, these are expressed in mils, that's, um, cents per hundred dollars of valuation. That actually comes out to sixty-four cents per hundred dollars of home value or two dollars and seven cents for the average homeowner. So for every, for every percentage point we're off in that estimation, for trying to keep the tax rate flat, the impact to your average homeowner is about two dollars. So I just wanted to be very clear that that's, you know, that, that's what we're talking about, um, if we're, we're doing that. Our, as usual, uh, over the last couple of years, we are looking to utilize fund balance, um, to balance this budget. We have been coming in well under budget every year and do anticipate that again here in twenty-twenty-one. Our, the increase in expenditures in this budget as presented is four point two percent. That's approximately two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the year. The primary driver of that is, um, a three percent increase on staff salaries and wages. That includes a cost of living and a merit increase plus some changes to the way that we are structured for public safety, um, within the library. We are looking at doing a little bit of a departmental reorganization around public safety. So that is one of those primary drivers. Also, for the last several years, we have been flat for non-personnel expenses and this actually contemplates a four point one percent increase for non-personnel lines as well. We do have some, some good impacts. Our I R R F rate, that's Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, so what we pay, um, in, on the pension side for the library, our rate has gone down from just over eleven percent to just under nine percent for twenty-twenty-one. So that's fantastic that you can see that reflected on the expense side in that budget. We do also have the changes that we anticipate within the health insurance and, and other employee benefits in there. Couple of the biggest drivers, um, as far as non-personnel lines are also those other insurances, our property and liability insurances. We have been warned by our insurance broker that the market is hardening and they expect a fairly substantial increase in premium that we won't be sure of until we're ready.
I'm just going to remind one other thing affecting personnel is the minimum wage change.
Absolutely. And, uh, the increases for staff, um, as they did in previous years, as the minimum wage has gone up, uh, staff who are affected by that minimum wage increase will receive either the three percent or the minimum wage increment, whichever is larger. So that's the way we've done it for the last couple of years. So for the fund balance utilization, uh, at the lowest EAV number, we would utilize the three point five percent increase, we would utilize approximately four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars of fund balance. At the highest EAV estimate, five point five percent, it would be about three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars of fund balance utilization. All three of the budgets presented here would leave an estimate in operating fund balance of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. So we are still looking at having that substantial fund balance that is in excess of what our operating reserve policy says we need. And don't forget that, um, our operating reserves are only according to our policy, are only for emergency funds because for cash flow purposes, the Village of Elmer's Grove by intergovernmental agreement, uh, takes care of any cash flow issues because, because it can. But that also, um, allowed, allowed us to begin that capital replacement fund. That, the fund balance was not needed for operating reserve before the Village changed their fiscal year. So the need for that, um, that cash flow reserve was created by, the Village's changed. The, the library got no, no say in it. So that was part of the reason that they were amenable to supply our assets to do that. As you know, tax bills are due in June and September. Ninety-six percent of our revenue is property taxes. So, um, when the Village was on a May first fiscal year, the library had no cash flow problems and the Village changed that to January. Does anyone have any questions? Did do the standards comparison as usual. Illinois Public Library, serving our public standards for Illinois Public Libraries recommends, um, between sixty and seventy percent for personnel total and then at least twelve percent of the operating budget to go toward materials. And this meets all those conditions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say like this, I was reviewing the budget for the meeting. I, I'm definitely leaning towards your initial inclination of the four and a half percent and it, in, in your point tonight about the.
You said masks are required for all occupants in the case room, for those who have not been vaccinated.
Four and six, I like the fact that it's still, doesn't, and there's, there's nothing magic about the four point six versus four point five, but it's still nice that what we're projecting or what we're, you know, our levy percentage is presumably going to be less than what the Village is projecting the EAV increase by, um, which is nice. I think also, um, because I look at these kind of like over years and the fact that it's four and a half percent this year, yeah, that's the highest it's been in five years. But at the same time, if you look at the average, it's probably over three percent over the course of that period of time.
Excellent.
And then, um, the third point is, is that I think that, you know, clearly we, I think three and a half, any of these numbers would be fine, but I also think that, um, the supplies and with just inflation kind of starting, could be a little bit more than we're expecting, even though that's a smaller percentage of our. even though that's a smaller percentage of our expenditures, I think they could be a little bit more than what we think. And so I'd rather, you know, I like the, you know, kind of at that four and a half percent rather than three and a half percent. So those are my thoughts.
I just wanted to make, I agree with you on that issue. Just an information issue for somebody watching the tape next week or something like that. This fund balance we're talking about is basically comprises a couple of things. One is it's an emergency fund. If the, if we have to suddenly in an unexpected way replace the roof and the boiler in the same year, we can do it without having to borrow at whatever interest rate happens to be available. So that's a, we call it a rainy day fund, but it's much more important than that sounds. And of course, the other part is the, what I like to call a reserve fund, which allows us to save money a little bit. So when we do have on a scheduled basis replaced capital equipment, we have the funds for it, and we don't have to borrow at that point either. So that's just a reminder of what that fund is.
And over the past five years, the library's tax rate has fallen every year.
And if the EAV comes in higher, like at the 4.6, then it basically will stay the same and go down a little bit.
How people look at the way...
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments? Just so, as a reminder, we do need to approve a budget next month, and so to the extent that you do have any questions or want to work through this somewhere detailed way, just use, between now and then, to make sure you're comfortable with it.
Is there, is there kind of a general consensus that, that we're looking kind of at that 4.5% EAV?
I would not go lower.
Yeah. If, if everybody's kind of on, on board with that, then that, I will do just the one for, for the August.
Perfect. Yeah.
Keep the board accountable.
No, I, I think that's safe. I mean, that, that is, I gather what's kind of on, what some of the other government bodies are using, so, rise or fall at the same time. And I'd rather just make a place of personnel and everything else, and the personnel part we've talked a great length over the last few years, and this is right on track for that. So I'm very much in favor of that. And I'm very happy to see us maybe can a little bit catch up in the materials and some of the other, 15, 30% of our budget that we've been, kicking the can down for a little bit on some of those things. And so I think this is an opportunity without creating them because of the EAV, because of the NAD Tiff, we can do a little catch up on that and not undoing in your own situations factors.
It just, and I know I've made this point probably three or four of the last, you know, at times we've had to do this process, but I think it's also just from my own perspective, to be careful about going below, because so much of our cost of personnel related, if the personnel cost is in the 3%, like you're not gonna go below 3%. Like you gotta, that's like the hard kind of baseline, and then you go above that depending on kind of what your other needs are for the library, so.
I don't think adjusting contemplation to a different policy that going on over the years, it's rather than try to throw that into two years from now, because yeah, it might catch up.
At least you start that process, but no, that's probably not it. I have a question. Julie mentioned that you're gonna target a little increase in labor costs to do this weekend because we are all working. Is that something we'll hear about at the maximum meeting, if you present the front of it, or is it not? That, that is something that we will be doing really early, and actually, it's all placeholders right now. We haven't made a final determination, and we probably won't till we are in the fall. So this is kind of like the biggest numbers that we think will happen there. Ian has given us three different options that we are currently looking at and contemplating. We've got some other moving parts happening right now, some personnel changes that are affecting where we will wind up with this.
What you say internally, that means that it will all be something that we discuss here in the presentation?
Well, we will present it to you, but it won't be a board approval kind of situation. You're, you're just approving overall budget.
While you're wondering how, like how much of the world is affected to that.
There are, it's approximately just under 250.
Any additional questions or comments regarding the fiscal 2022 draft?
I just thank you for all of the, you know, the work in detail. It's our job, you see.
Absolutely. Okay, we're now on to agenda item 9B, the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan.
I was so glad we don't have to watch some of this anymore. Okay, so we are watching all of the latest guidance on masking and vaccination, all of the things that are coming out now. The CDC's newest, newest guidance as far as community transmission levels. We are still nearing HCM at a moderate level, so we are not making any changes at this time. We continue to roll forward in bringing back services. Notary service resumed on Monday. We are moving full steam ahead for in-person programming beginning in September. So indoor programming resumes. We will still, we will also be opening this room to, and the conference rooms, to public booking beginning in September. And then that will open at first just through the end of the year, and then in November, we will open the rolling six-month calendar and go back to our, our normal way of doing that. So we are moving forward and very hopeful that we will be able to continue going forward in recovery and not have to roll back. We will, we've, we've taken down the Lexi glass. Staff are still required to show their vaccination card to the HR, and so they have, they want to be without masks in the building. Still requiring masks in the kids' rooms, still social distancing in the kids' rooms, still because children cannot be vaccinated, we're still keeping the toys of the kids' room for the time being. And we're actually taking the opportunity to do some little updates in the kids' room. We're gonna get some fresh things, gonna make some changes, that gets the old cafe area in the kids' room, and so look.
Any questions or comments regarding the COVID-19 response, response and phase reopening?
I think our member of the public did not realize that she was supposed to comment during the public comment.
I don't know what I'm doing, so.
Please, if you have a comment.
Well, yeah, I actually have a question. I support everything you're doing to keep Americans safe. I just have a question about the media rooms. You know, you have the audio room and the video room and all that. I'm just curious when those are gonna be open.
Coming soon. We do, we do anticipate right around the time that the, the rest of the rooms are opening to public booking, so this month.
I completely support you.
Thank you.
And our media lab coordinator, Ed Romiel, is sitting right behind you, and Ed is looking forward to when we reopen the media lab as well.
I think our experience has been pretty, as positive as it could be over the past 15 months or more, and, and I think that's because you and therefore we put together a good plan, and also we're very lucky, as we look around us, that Kitch County has the best numbers in the state. We have the most positive rate, fewest, 100,000 new cases and so forth, slightly better than her county, but, and so I feel very comfortable, land as it stands. We have been made a leader foot, obviously, because of the change.
Do you have to roll back, so basically, I mean, would it look like literally backwards? Like here's the last thing, you're not, you're not, you're not the last thing. Because I think you were really deliberate, and if you were a good one, you'd let me, you'd sit there, this is the next thing. Okay, here's the next thing. It was deliberately planned to, to make sure everything was safe, and staff would come, like, before, so, I mean, it's not, it's not questioning. It wasn't, it wasn't, it was like, okay, in first, it was here instead of there. And that will all depend on the guidance coming out of the CDC, the H looks like at the time, but at least we have a roadmap now. And so you're exactly right. We, we know what those baby steps we took to get where we are today, and, you know, maybe we take five steps back, and then we know that we can roll forward in that same kind of way. The most difficult thing at this point would be, because we are back in full hours, if we have to go back to having door monitors, that will become a staffing issue. So we've started to talk about what it might look like if we do have a mask mandate come back. And again, public safety. Nothing brought public safety home like having to reinforce a mask mandate.
Everyone in the library became part of the public safety.
Yes, exactly.
And just said what I said, I just looked at the website now, and we moved to the substantial.
What? It was moderate as it earlier.
It was moderate earlier this afternoon. We pretty smile at this many people. Four gets to the next level. Substantial as well. Did change that.
Before it changes, we authorize the... I will move to reauthorize the COVID-19 response. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to reauthorize the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan as presented as agenda item 9B has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed through all calls, please?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Crumey?
Yes.
Trustee Humphrey?
Yes.
Trustee Funtz, yes, yes. Trustee Gray?
Yes, thank you very much. We have reauthorized the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan. We're now on to agenda item 10, the library director's report.
Right. As you can see from my written report, our land acknowledgement and the suite of resources with that is nearing its final version. That will come before the board at the August board meeting to have you discuss and hopefully approve that land acknowledgement in its final form. We are planning for a first reading event and ceremony to, to bring that land acknowledgement forward. We are working with Midwest Soaring Foundation, and their executive director, Joseph Standing Marashron, will be here and a big part of that event. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that. The only day he could do was one of the only days that I couldn't do, that we could still get the, the official park location thing, thanks to the Park District for allowing us to use that. Joseph Standing here was very adamant that this should be done on some, as part of the land. So we, we did really want to respect his wishes in that regard, so that's why we have that date. So that will come in August, and then the anti-heat statement framework will come back to you in September. That will be a facilitated discussion. Rashida Grant Washington has agreed to be our facilitator for that evening's discussion, and we are looking to make that the only real substantial action, so that you all have a good amount of time.
We haven't, we haven't set that date yet, or did we already set?
It's, it's at the September board meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
She is able to do that day.
Okay.
So we're removing all of the things off that is our board agenda. Fortunately, that time of, September is usually a light agenda anyway, so the timing works out really well for it to be that, that time. And then October will be the library director evaluation, so you'll have your closed session meeting, so we're kind of balancing your workload over the remainder of the...
Hopefully, it will be in person, too. I'm sorry, what is, when is the, you said, August official park?
Oh, no, no, that's October. The August, I'm, I'm sorry, it's October 2nd.
Thank you.
The, the August is the discussion and approval that's at your August, that's our August meeting. August board meeting.
Official park.
The event official park is Saturday, October 2nd. And hopefully by Friday, we'll have the time and more of the details settled. Our public relations manager, Cindy Petrie, and adult and teen services librarian Gary, who've been so instrumental in this project, will be meeting with Joseph Standing Marashron on that day.
And when are you intending to roll this out to other community organizations to both comment and hopefully adopt and support?
We're gonna give them the sneak peek. We're going to send that draft webpage link to our organizational partners around Demers Grove after it's finalized. So the, the ladies have told me that August 2nd, Monday, August 2nd, we should have everything ready to be able to show and answer any questions from those other organizations. It will be sent to them with the, this is the final draft, it hasn't been approved by...
You'll have the benefit of that.
Yes.
Before we...
Yes. And as you know, the Village of Demers Grove, the Village Council asked us to work with them on a land acknowledgement. Little did they know at the time when they made the request that we had already begun moving forward on a land acknowledgement. So they and the Historical Society, they actually had asked as well, the Park District, who had actually begun some work and put us in touch with Dr. John Lowe and Ohio State University, and again, who was their initial consultant, and he's worked with us as well on the suite of resources.
And when we met with representatives, Baxter and Foster, they actually thought that. So the plot, only way to provide leadership in this area.
This has been, we actually started, Jen Rieske, our assistant director, has been working with the Illinois Library Association Best Practices Committee, and the Best Practices Committee has been putting, have been doing a land acknowledgement and putting together best practices, obviously, about land acknowledgements.
And now we're borrowing ours.
And, and now, and they're looking at ours, going, oh, we like this, so it, it's all come full circle. So it, it's all come full circle.
And will staff receive the funding after we get to the project?
Uh, so far it has just been the project team. We do anticipate sharing it with the management team at the same time for that feedback.
And so obviously there's a ceremony on the 2nd, so I know we're all excited and we share our partners. What other halls would you kind of talk about?
So we have, we're planning to have plaques at each entrance and a children's version of the land acknowledgement at the entrance to the kids' room as well. And we are anticipating that Midwest Soaring Foundation, this is the beginning of a partnership with them. We are anticipating doing some additional programs. They have a lot of like informational programs, particularly around things like native plants and native, and food. So we're really looking forward to having, hosting some of their programs and being a good partner in bringing the history and, and the Native American culture forward. Shedding some, some light on who our Indigenous folks were in the past and who they are today. What else did I have? Oh, our pickup lockers still have no install date. That has been, that's a bugaboo. They, they don't even want to return our calls at this point, so we are discussing our options. Also, the Downers Grove Library Foundation has registered as a, whatever we actually call it. I'm supposed to remember it, the non, for the nonprofit volunteer stipend program. So if you volunteer for Rotary Growth Fest and put DGPL Foundation in the non-for-profit line when you register, they will get, the foundation will receive $40 for every volunteer shift that you work. So we're hoping to be able to get a little, little bit of funding for the foundation from our volunteers helping out Rotary. And it's a great way to, to get a big bang for your volunteer time because Rotary Club also donates all their, all the funds and the proceeds from Growth Fest back to the community. Just a little plug for Growth Fest. And we do have our Growth Fest closing, so make sure that you check the library's website before heading out on Growth Fest weekend, August 19th to 22nd.
Interestingly, 38 of the last count organizations within Downers Grove have signed up for the stipend program this year. It's a new record.
Folks, all right, and all the time.
Shall we have a question to, to time off? I know there's like a period that, like, did it like a date with Jennifer?
It's actually a weekend.
Oh, just a weekend, okay, okay. So during that, Jennifer and, and who's?
Um, actually, Lizzie and Allison, if you remember the succession plan. Lizzie and Allison actually, technically it's supposed to be Allison because she has a little more seniority than Lizzie does. But really, they. They, they share the authority equally. But in actual, in actuality, it is only one day that Jen and I are both not here because I actually fly back in to Illinois on the 2nd. So if anything were to happen on the 3rd, I would still be original. Yeah, that doesn't happen very often and we did not realize that, that we get overlooked, so. Oh, and just to complete aside, in January of 2022, I may miss the board meeting. Because my son is getting married on that Friday. And so we were talking while he was here last weekend, he and his fiancee, we were talking about everybody's travel arrangements, et cetera. And they're looking for some help getting ready on Thursday. And so it's like, well, then we gotta fly in on Wednesday, but it's board meeting day, so.
So the destination wedding?
They're getting married in Orlando.
In Orlando?
Yes, it's where they currently live.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Julie? All right, I'll move to agenda item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments or requests for information? I don't want to put proactive discussion first right now, but it was, I've been working in, when one of my other bosses was working with some food companies, trying to find people. And the issue has come up again of books, library cards for people who don't have a address. And a couple of years ago, or maybe it's longer, it's on a plaza, I'm hearing about fun. We developed a process where a P A S guest, a registered P A S guest could get a library card. Over the past 18 months, P A S have been. I don't know how to put it, they, they, they're, they're, the effective way that they function has changed a great deal. They don't have shelters. They will again this fall, they're going to start, but, but they're going to look quite different. I guess my question is, now I don't expect the answer, but I would like to throw out the possibility we might expand that in some way to find a way that we could get a library card to someone perhaps who does not have this registered yet.
And we have, we've actually been very lenient throughout the pandemic on our shelter user. They restricted used cards that our shelter users are eligible as well.
There are people within the community who do not have their own private address. And, but there are ways they can get it. And P A S is not the only one.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just going back to something we talked about before. I'm just bringing it up again because I want to understand the, the public safety person. And you mentioned Ian, is Ian the person who's looking into that? Is that what's going on?
Ian has, over the last couple of months, Ian has met with, looked at a number of other libraries in suburban suburbs and their model for dealing with public safety. And basically, how, how is their maintenance, public safety, security? How, how does that all fit together? What are the job descriptions? How, how might that play up here? And so he has given us three different models to look at.
So we say public safety, we mean public safety, but also staff safety.
Absolutely.
Because that was my, that was just a concern that I, that I had, just seeing what was happening at the board meeting, seeing what's happening and hearing what's happening in other situations, including at the library. Staff safety is definitely a concern that I have. And I want to just, want to say that, that I'm concerned about some of the things that I think is happening to the, to the, you know, face-to-face people or meeting the patrons or maybe anywhere you are. Questions.
Okay, just a, a big portion of this has come from staff who have been having to enforce rules and then turn around, you know, as person in charge or whatever, and then turn around and be the customer service persons at the desk with the same individual. And so the.
It would be nice if that was, if that, if that position were given to an outside person. He isn't then going to have to help them find a book. So I just, I, I'm really, really grateful to you that you're looking at that. It's being taken very seriously because I know that for us, the last thing we want to hear is that a staff member is, something's happened to a staff member.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
For their safety and we want them to stay here, working, not leaving.
And up to this point, we've had library monitors, but they've only been, but only that worked certain hours that we've been pulling. And so now we're, we're taking longer coverage.
Okay, any other trustee comments or requests for information? All right, well then we're on to agenda item number 12 and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone.